Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the October 4th, 2022 Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. There is one public hearing tonight, and if you do wish to testify, I'm sure you probably already have, but there are forms on the dials in the back, please fill them out and turn them in to Shannon, and we will give you an opportunity to speak. I do have an announcement tonight. Congratulations to Idaho's 2023 Teacher of the Year Karen Lauritson. Karen is a 4th grade teacher at Tree Rock Elementary in Post Falls. We are so fortunate to have such great teachers like Karen teaching our children. So it's not too often, I don't know if we ever have, maybe, but not too often we get a Teacher of the Year from Post Falls. So that's, that's a very big accomplishment. And I showed the council members, had I thought earlier, I would have given it to staff so we could have showed it. But we hear about public safety in Post Falls. And today we had our first ever arresting of a wild turkey. So we have a picture of one of our police officers that did rescue a wild turkey in the street. So feel sure that the turkeys are not going to run amok in Post Falls. We do have a proclamation tonight. Safe sleep infant, safe infant sleep awareness month. Whereas sudden unexpected infant deaths, S U I D, is the sudden and unexpected death of an infant birth to age one year in which the manner and cause of death are not immediately obvious prior to the investigation. And whereas sudden infant death syndrome, SIDS, is a subset of S U I D and remains the number one cause of infant death between the age of 28 days of life to one year. And whereas the tragedy of S U I D can happen to any family regardless of race, ethnicity, or economic group. And whereas evidence-based research has proven that when babies are placed in a crib alone in the parent's room, on their backs, on a firm crib mattress with a fitted crib sheet, using no crib bumper pads, pillows, blankets, quilts, or stuffed animals and toys in a smoke-free environment, they will keep, they will sleep safest and reduce the risk of SIDS and prevent many other infant sleep-related deaths. And whereas Inland Northwest SIDS Foundation is a statewide not-for-profit organization dedicated to providing infant safe sleep education, bereavement support services, and creating community awareness around preventing sleep-related infant deaths. And whereas during the month of October, Northwest Infant Survival and SIDS Alliance will hold special events including Run for the Angels on October 8th and distribute safe infant sleep educational pamphlets, cribs, and wearable blankets to families in need, therefore providing the best opportunity for all babies in Post Falls to survive and thrive. Now therefore, I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Post Falls, Idaho, do hereby proclaim October 2022 as Safe Infant Sleep Awareness Month in Post Falls, Idaho, in order to raise awareness about preventing sleep-related infant deaths and to encourage infant safe sleep practices so that no parent will have to endure the tragedy of the death of a baby. And I would like to just publicly thank Liz Montgomery who heads that up for our area. If you folks knew a fraction of the hours and effort that Liz has put into this, it's truly amazing. So your efforts are very much appreciated and recognized. Thank you, Liz. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict?
I did receive two ex parte emails on Wednesday regarding the public hearing.
Mr. Wilson, we need to do anything?
So I talked with Councilor Chauv earlier about this. And he sent me copies of the emails that he received. Received an email from Kevin O'Neal and Jean O'Neal, if I'm getting the name right. I believe many, several of you may have also gotten those. I looked through the record today, those are not in the record. I checked in with planning. When they came in, we did email them, asking them that they, that they submit them through the appropriate channel. Don't know what happened, but I can tell you that essentially the same email is in the record from the Planning Commission at PC4 and PC5. Those two exhibits are essentially the same letter. So you can consider the ones that are in the record, the PC4, PC5, but the ones that you got, which are very nominal differences, would not be something you could consider.
Recognize the name from the P and Z hearing.
They were so much the same, I just assumed they were the same when I saw them in the packets.
Awfully close.
Thank you. Thanks, Kenny. Jason, would you please present the consent calendar?
Yes. Item A are the minutes September 20th, 2022 for the city council meeting. Excuse me. B are from payables, September 13th, 2022 to September 26th, 2022. Item C is the Morris Annexation Reason Decision. Item D is the Bell Cielo III Legislative Decision. E is the Ashler Ranch Annexation Reason Decision. Item F is the Hydrella Estates Zone Change Reason Decision. Item G is the July Cashed Investments. Item H is the North Shore District Master Development Agreement. Item I is the Mangu Wet Meadows Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item J is the Pasture View Estates Subdivision Application. Item K is the Mangu Meadows Annexation Development Agreement and Dedications. And item L is the Mangu Meadows Master Development Agreement.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I've moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is our public hearing. And folks, as I said, fill out a form, turn it in to Shannon, we'll listen to you. Please note there is a timer. And just pay attention to that while always let you finish your sentence, your statement, but keep your eye on the timer. And also, please keep your comments pertinent to the issues at hand. I know I've been sitting out there speaking either for or against items at city council, and I know it can be emotional, and I understand and appreciate that. But, but let's try to keep comments directed just at the issues at hand, and we'll move quicker. But we will listen to all of you, so. And also, we're gonna lit, as I say, we will listen to all of you. So I would ask that even if someone's speaking, you don't agree with them, please show them the respect, and don't interrupt them, let them talk, right? That'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Thorson, and members of the city council. John Manley, the Planning Manager here at the city Post Falls, presenting the staff report for the Hargrave Hathaway Annexation File Number ANNX 228. So the applicant is Kimberly and Brett Hargrave, and they're here tonight. There's a couple owners of this property, one is from Kimberly and Brett Hargrave, and there's also Will and Yute Hathaway. So they're requesting you as a council to approve their annexation requests of approximately 9.63 acres into the city Post Falls with the RM Residential Mix Zoning Designation. To clarify, what they're desiring is to do 77 single-family townhomes. It does require a development agreement, that was in Exhibit S2, I believe. That development agreement more or less creates a body for doing contract zoning. So things can be modified as in that, as you hear presentations and deliverables, you can modify and augment that development agreement if you see fit. Project location is as you see here, it's just a bit west of the intersection of Chase Road and Pole Line. It's directly west of the Black Stallion subdivision, if you're familiar with it, and the developing Montrose to the south of Pole Line Avenue. And south of the rail corridor. Current land use is they are larger residential lots in the county. The current site has no significant topology or vegetation matters. It is, though, over the Rastrow aquifer. Water provided for this, water provider for the site would be East Green Acres with the city providing sanitary sewer services. As I've been highlighting in some of these, a lot of times it's the initial residential presentation of an evening, just kind of as a reminder of the Land Use Planning Act, LUPA, a state, requires us to adhere to the Land Use Planning Act, of which creates the comprehensive planning and planning models. One of the items here is the purpose, 676502 of the Land Use Planning Act. I kind of highlighted some here, is protect property rights, looking at low-cost housing options. It also encourages urban and urban-type development in cities, and also to avoid undue concentrations of population and overcrowding of land. And so what the undue means is going counter to the comp plan, counter to the goals and policies in that comp plan to attain that goal. Some of the housing policies in that for planning duties in the Land Use Planning Act is creating safe, sanitary, and adequate housing for a community. And there you see that low-cost housing bullet. All of which to maintain a competitive market, market. So looking at the residential mix as an overview, in order to qualify for an ASK, it's got to be a minimum of four acres, which the site is. You can see here for maximum height, so for duplex, twin homes, and single-family, they all share the same height of 35 feet right there. So if, they're not asking for multifamily, but if there was, you'd have that 45 feet. So other uses besides the, those would be at 45 feet. You can see there, the open space requirement with the mixed zone as a baseline is at 7% as part of that zoning district. Their proposed plan as part of this at this point in time, we're looking at the annexation and zoning, but in order for you to get an idea of the development agreement, going over this is key. You can see here, there is the intent to extend Miss Hannah Westerly and to the south. I have a slide on this later, but it might be good to point out now. This right here, this is a dead end, it kind of looks like a cul-de-sac, but that western edge of Black Stallion kind of terminates as an incomplete cul-de-sac. It's always been envisioned that someday, as this develops, whatever zone that may be, we would extend that to the west and down to Pole Line more likely. You also can see here the green areas with the planned open space and pedestrian network that they intend to create internally. And there's their location of their single-family townhomes and their proposed layout at this time. That red highlighted area, that is the proposed commercial lot in their plan. The RM zone calls out that you can go up to 20%. It's not, you know, a vested right, you would embed that in a development agreement. Same with the neighborhood commercials, you can go up to 10%. Here's where you see a highlight here where they have that restriction to do multifamily apartment buildings of three units or greater in a single structure, which this is not that. And you can see currently their commercial is about 7.4% on that square footage, so you see that cap at 7.4%. Looking at, since it has a commercial, looking at potential uses of this. So typically, looking at the location of this, it wouldn't be ideal for commercial that demands high traffic, high vehicular counts at this point in time. It would be more or less, in order for it to be market and be able to work, it would have to be more neighborhood-centric. So I highlighted in blue some that, you know, more than likely would be an itch, would be, you know, a little restaurant, a cafeteria, maybe a snack, non-alcoholic bar, retail office maybe of sorts. So these are the ones that, when you look at the RM zone, you don't see the bar there. But yeah, so these are the ones that they, if you have, you know, they're all, you can see here, neighborhood-centric or community-centric. And there is a purpose of that, when we did that residential mix, is you'd want commercial uses that would complement a residential neighborhood. Looking at here, this is kind of looking at where it is located in relationship to, there's the site highlighted in blue. There's a site in relationship to the developing commercial corridors. These more than likely, you would see those higher-use commercial uses desiring to locate at those rather than a neighborhood commercial that doesn't get the traffic counts that really warrant that investment. Now going into the zone change criteria aspect of this, and I'll come back towards the end and kind of try to tie that up, but going into the zone change. First one, amendments, the zoning map should be in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map. The next one deals with the comprehensive plan as well, but looking at the goals and policies. So looking at the future land use map, the yellow there, and there's the project in Hatch, it's all in that low-density residential designation. The comp plan calls out low-density, and this is an unusual, uncharacteristic, when you look around comp plans around the nation, and principally, anywhere from about a half to about eight is that, that range for low-density. And so we call that out in our comp plan, is up to eight dwellings per acre. And it doesn't mean every project, it means as a whole that you would see that kind of scattered, more or less like it's an average within that area potentially. You'd see some like at eight, probably some at two, maybe some at a half, it'd be anything within that range. This particular one is 77, which comes at a 7.9. So basically, on the principles and use of character, would be in line with that aspect of it. Here's where you see the implementing zoning districts called out in that low-density. I bolded the RM, but I don't want to leave out the fact that all these other ones are also. So you could do an R1S, that'd be an implementing zone, it's under eight, same with R1. And R2, we removed the multifamily out, and then we added R2 in this because that's how you can attain that under eight with the R2. They're just choosing to ask for the RM. So there are options, other options available for that land use designation. Looking at the Central Prairie, it does call out supporting a variety of housing types and densities. Looking at, it also calls out, so when you're along a arterial collector, there's a focus provisions, it's not a mandate, but it does allude to the fact that, you know, it would be eligible for commercial where that exceeds 4,000 vehicles per day. Talking to the engineering department, that 2035 volumes are expected to be somewhere around 3,000 per day. So that kind of looks at the comp plan, future land use map aspect of it, looking at now the goals and policies. So goal one in the comp plan, grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health. Diversified housing is an element of attaining this goal. Looking at how the comp plan's set up and the reason, and I'm not going to have this under every slide, but just as an overview for those viewing and looking at the comp plan, at the end of each chapter and in Appendix B, that is, has all this contained in that. You can look at the goals, and there's a discussion point. So if there's any goal that's confusing, there is more elaborate conversation to be had after each goal for a better understanding. Goal two, maintain and improve the provision for high-quality, affordable, and efficient community services in Post Falls. So with that goal, and with potentially getting diversified housing with annexations, you do get right-of-way dedications with development, a lot of times we do get improved pedestrian corridor, which does allow some efficiency and potentially affordability. The third goal, maintain and improve Post Falls small-town scale charm and aesthetic beauty. Think that means something different amongst all of us, but if you look at the goal in the comp plan, it does kind of go into what the intent of that goal is. Goal five, keep Post Falls neighborhood safe, viable, and attractive. So this has been presented a few times, and a couple times it's come up, like what does this mean? Safe, vital, and attractive. So safe, I've kind of, kind of touched on this, when you get improved roadways and development, it does create a safer environment for both vehicles and traffic. It also creates avenues with development to get improved and increased access for emergency services into development. As an additional note, impact fees are paid with development, and those fees do go to a portionate to public safety. Vital, what is vital? Well, you're looking at the current housing shortage currently and the low vacancy rates. An increased number of this would help deal with that kind of housing crisis that's going on. Additionally, adding additional rooftops and housing options may also add to the vibrancy and diversity in Post Falls. Attractive, to site for single-family homes, we typically don't have site design standards for single-family homes. We do for townhome, we do have design standards. For example, we do exclude vinyl siding as an option. We do require two different materials for siding. We also have some other design standards as far as the placement of the principal plane to create some uniqueness with townhomes that aren't in other housing options. Goal six, maintain and improve Post Falls transportation network on pace and in concert with the need to plan objectives. Like I say here, is potentially with this one, with, upon development down the road, whatever that may be, you would get the frontage improvements along the north side of Pole Line. There is currently a gap on both the north and south side. So at the time that Montrose develops along the south, you'd get the southern half and those pedestrian ways. You wouldn't get the north half until the north develops. Plan for and establish types and quantities of land use in Post Falls. I think that's the intent of this application, is to provide some sort of diversity in housing. This here is just an aerial imagery, you can kind of see here the undeveloped portion of Montrose and then the county pocket. If you, anybody was to go down here as a pedestrian, you know, until development occurs, you do get kind of awkwardly pushed into the, the street. Once development occurs, that will be eliminated, and you'd have a safer path outside of that road right away. Protect and maintain Post Falls' natural resources, including clean air, soil, river, and aquifer. Oftentimes, you know, getting development off of the septic can assist in meeting that goal. Maintain the city and the Post Falls' long-term fiscal health. Kind of touched on that, I believe, with diversifying housing and the important role it plays in the business sector. Policy one, so now that kind of wraps up the goals, I'll move on to policies now. Support land use patterns that do the following, kind of touched on a lot of that. So I won't really go into that. Policy two, apply and revise zoning designations with careful considerations of the factors, including, put that up there, but I believe I've touched on most of that except for compatibility, which I will go into later. Encourage the development and off-quarter access and circulation for commercial and mixed-use areas of budding, limited access to materials. Encourage compatible infill development and redevelopment of vacant and underutilized properties within city limits, staff report goes into that. Ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping service residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities on different price levels and housing types. Policy 27, work to improve street connectivity in all areas of Post Falls, improving the walkability, public health, and safety, and transportation efficiency. Kind of already alluded to the fact that there was always been the intent to create a stub to the Westerly, kind of highlight there. That kind of is the first two criteria, now we'll go to the third. Zoning is assigned to considerations of street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses and community plans, and geographic and natural features. That kind of ties into the other one where I say we look at the existing environment. I'll touch base on that, on this criteria. So you're looking here, and I kind of overlaid the future plan for Montrose. We're currently in processing a PUD and subdivision amendment south of Pole Line. They'd like to work on different phasing south there. This is their proposed plan, you can see how it adjoins to Black Stallion to the east. Unfortunately, I couldn't do a really good job in doing my transparency. Did kind of blur this out, but you do have on the opposite side of the 100-foot wide rail corridor, you do have larger lots and Prairie Meadows. To the east, you have a development called Coleman Acres, smaller lot, single-family to the east. All lots here, you will have and share that same max height of 35 feet for the residential as the single-family. What's denoted here is, in black, there is a planned future bridge to go from Pole Line over the tracks and then transition in and connect to Maguire. So that is a planned project for sometime in the future. Additionally, you will have potentially the, it's planned to discuss sometime creating a green belt from Montrose at some point and connect Montrose to the city center downtown area through a pedestrian connection trail. Looking at the fact that Pole Line is an arterial and the types of development you would typically find, this is kind of a map that just kind of looks at different types of development and generally where you would see them along a roadway. Most of it is governed because of speed, along wider, faster roads. You know, you generally have limited access, and you usually have a higher intense in usage to buffer those impacts on nearby less intense uses. And where you have slower speeds, generally it's more friendly in nature for pedestrians, and therefore you would see the, that single-family right there in the lesser dense with more access points. Here's where you see kind of the road layout, the road classifications, and the statement in the staff report that arteries are designed for traffic volumes between 6,000 and 15,000. So Pole Line Avenue does have the future capacity, being the fact that 2035 volumes are expected to be at 3,000 per day. Looking at this project and where it's related to, where more than likely people would potentially go to and from on the site in blue, what I highlight here along the freeway are the interchanges. And then you have access to the north. So if you're going to the work in North Spokane, generally if you left this bite, this site, you would end up going easterly up Chase and then probably over to this site. Or you could come south to Spokane Street, more than likely. Generally, people go through the path of least resistance to getting out of an area rather than going through circuitous routes. So there's the first three criteria, going through the, the next three. I kind of put NAs because on the fourth criteria, commercial and high-density, they're not being asked. And then we're not, it's not being asked industrial. The other one is the limited neighborhood commercial statement, that criteria five. And it states that they're typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from high-intense urban activity areas. I'll bring up this slide again. Generally speaking, it is further away from the high-intense urban areas. So now looking at the overall, I'm going to go through benefits and concerns of the overall proposal before I wrap up here. So the benefit is it does prevent substandard development in the county. And all I'm alluding to there is there are certain uses that is in the ag zone in certain developments that would potentially transition a different use that could embody potentially a substandard use of which, and also, if you don't get development, then for perpetuity, you would end up getting, you wouldn't get those improvements on that north side of Pole Line that would have some value to the community. Address future needs through annexations, I just kind of highlighted that. Promote compatibility urban development, we're kind of deciding that tonight. It is in that low-density designation in the comp plan. Address lack of available single-family residences, I think we know that there is a housing shortage currently. And highlight that they do pay impact fees for the parks, public safety, and streets for the residential units. I've already kind of looked at the concerns. I mentioned the issue with housing, adequate parks. I got a slide here. This was in our comprehensive plan and so this was like a park needs map. So if you're annexing an area in the brighter green, the city would be seeking means to potentially attain parkland to meet a gap in level of service. This is, at this location, you do have two parks at the Prairie Meadows providing a level of service. And then eventually we'll have a regional park down in Montrose and there is some open space in Montrose within walking distance. Impact the school, you can refer to the comment letter that was in the staff report that they remain neutral on the proposal. Looking at parking, they did propose each unit would require two off-street parking stalls as well as they provided some parking off-site at these locations. And then transportation concerns, I think the staff report kind of discussed to some degree of what their issues and their concerns of their transportation issues. I kind of did a highlight overview of that in a relationship where it sits with where they more than likely would be commuting to, would be at either Coeur d'Alene, Spokane, and/or to North Spokane. They'd use their most passive, least resistance. So if there's any other detailed questions regarding transportation, Rob Paulus is here tonight that can answer any of those questions. Any questions or concerns? Oh wait, I do have to go over this. So here's the agencies that are routed. Here's the list. Post Falls Police Department remain neutral, School District was neutral, Cooten County Fire, they said they'd stay in partnership at the time of development with the city. Highway District, they're in support of it, more than likely to get those improvements on Pole Line. Department of Environmental Quality, they had no environmental concerns on the project. The Union Pacific or the P sixty-six line, the gas line, they said they have not been approved or identified on any encroachment issues. And then Highway District supported the annexation. So now I'd have any questions?
Any questions, John? Joe?
It's probably more for Rob, actually. Can you go to the slide where just anything that shows Pole Line where it kind of ends and drops down to the residential street?
Not this one?
Not that one, need to farther zoomed out. That'll work.
That'll work?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we got Pole Line in green and that's a minor arterial. Then we've got Clark Fork Parkway, which anybody traveling west on Pole Line, if they want to continue west, they're going to have to use that street, correct? What's that street rated?
Clark Fork Parkway is classified as a minor collector roadway. And minor collector roadways are typically two thousand to, about five thousand vehicles per day.
Okay, thank you.
And just to follow up on that a little bit, currently Clark Fork Parkway is only operating at about twenty percent of its capacity. And by twenty thirty-five, with development in the area, it is anticipated to be still underneath thirty percent total capacity for the roadway.
Then one more question, it wasn't kind of addressed in the packet, but the bridge over the railway, we're talking fifteen, twenty years on that?
It is shown in our transportation master plan as being in place by the year twenty thirty-five. We do have that structure within our impact fee project list. We are collecting impact fee dollars towards ten percent of the estimate, excuse me, the estimated cost of that project and the remainder of those funds we had identified in the impact fee project list as being from grant dollars that we would acquire.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Any other questions? If you've done, thanks, John. See applicant wish to speak? Applicant?
Thank you.
Sorry. So used to saying it, I kind of mumbled it, I guess, I apologize. Name for the record, please.
Kimberly and Brett Hargrave.
I'll have you say in the microphone so it picks it up.
Do you guys have something?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to introduce ourselves as a developer. We're the Hargrave side of the Hargrave, have the Hathaway Annexation. I'm Kimberly Hargrave and Brett Hargrave. I've lived in this community since nineteen eighty and held several occupational licenses here. We've raised eight kids here and just graduated our third son from Post Falls High School. We're well-invested in this community and excited about this project. And Brett will just give a little synopsis of why we chose this project.
Yeah, so we've, we've owned this property since two thousand nine. As Kimberly stated, we raised our family there for several years and just graduated our third son from Post Falls High School.
Along with a few cows and goats and pigs.
That's right. So we've, we've run the gambit there. And, and we've just had a great appreciation for, for that land and that piece. And we're looking for a way to kind of give back to the community that's given so much to us. One of the things that we, we looked at and we're concerned about as we move forward is the ability for housing for everybody. We see a lot of, we see a lot of housing opportunities for folks coming in from out of state. Our concern is for those that are here now and here today. And that's, that's a big concern and how does that, how does that happen with current market conditions? And because we're fortunate enough to have, to have owned the property long enough to where frankly, it just, it pencils to where we can offer something homeownership to, to, to our local market, not folks coming in from out of town. We found that as, as a huge benefit. And so we're really excited to be able to present this opportunity to the city as, as townhouses that are, again, single-family homes that are for homeownership. And yeah, so that's, that's what we've got. And if there's any, you know, technical questions, our engineer is here. But I think John's done a great job presenting all of that information, so.
Yeah, thank you, John. One other thing I wanted to state too is that there were two other considerations we had when picking this, this project. And it was the shape of this piece of land that it is a unique shape and that we were dealing with the Miss Hannah Knuckle that was dead-ended into our property. So we knew we would likely need to bring that in and then swoop around with some kind of a road that then also allowed for the bridge, the future bridge that's coming as well. So that's how we came up with this plan also.
Sorry, one, sorry, one other piece I think is really important to identify as well. As, as we've been in this community and other communities, one of the things that, that really makes a community very strong is obviously when, when people are coming together and, and you know your neighbors and, and you know, you're watching each other's neighbors grow up, you're watching your neighbor's kids grow up and know who their parents are. And so as we identified very specifically for that RM zone, this, this commercial piece, and as I think John was very eloquent in stating that this is a neighborhood commercial. So we're, we're not talking about big box stores. We're not trying to increase traffic. Quite frankly, we're looking for an opportunity to decrease traffic flow by having an opportunity for people to walk and come together, but a place to get to know your neighbors, get to know them more. And so that's, I, I think that's a real key aspect of this project is that we're creating an opportunity for people to, to come together and, and know who your neighbors are. It just makes a stronger community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Joe?
Question. So you mentioned the, the lack of affordable housing for those who have lived here for a long time. I've, I've been here my entire life and I've got family here. And, and it's, if I hadn't purchased a home in Post Falls when I did, I wouldn't be able to afford the home I live in now. So I understand that.
Right.
Completely. I don't remember anything in the development agreements that would limit yourself to selling to people who have had residency to Cooten County for a specified period of time that I missed that, or?
No, you didn't. You didn't. And that, and that's, that's not in there. The, the, the goal is to be hitting a, you know, a price point that is.
Well, we have three, if I can address.
Yeah.
We have three older boys who are grown and on their own and they can't afford to live here. One of them's a pilot in training, the other one's a student, and the third one is in the military. And, and actually, no, do I get them right?
It's a foreman in construction.
Foreman in construction. Sorry, pilot, and then in the milit, and then the third one's in the military. And they can't live here. So of course, we'd love, you know, I mean, people, all people would buy these. Whoever would, you know, people from all over are going to buy, would buy these. But this could be an opportunity for our kids to buy these. And there's nothing like that here right now for them. So that was what inspired us as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
See none? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
In favor and wishing to speak, Will Hathaway. And name for the record when you get there, please.
I'm Will Hathaway, fourteen twenty-one West Pole Line. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Will Hathaway. My wife, Uta, and I are co-applicants on this project. We have lived at fourteen twenty-one West Pole Line for almost seventeen years, since November of two thousand five. We've lived in Post Falls for over twenty years. We've raised three of our four kids here. We've owned several businesses, including a Medicaid transportation company and a certified family home providing in-home care to aged and disabled. My wife has also served the community as a school best driver and a court-appointed special advocate. I'm here to speak obviously in favor of the proposed, proposed development. We have watched Post Falls grow these past twenty years with much of that growth happening immediately around us. When we first moved into our property, we felt like we were out in the country with unobstructed views of the mountains to our north and south. Now there's the Meadows to our north, Black Stallion to our east, and of course, Montrose to our south, proving that growth in Post Falls is inevitable. I want to speak mainly tonight on a couple of objections that I'm aware of to this project. Some of the objections will be covered by professionals whose expertise is greater than mine. So mainly want to touch base on the privacy issue that's been raised as well as concern of decreased values of neighboring properties. First, regarding the issue of privacy, this has been raised particularly by someone who lives across the railroad tracks from the project whose concern is that the residents of the townhomes will be able to see into their backyard. The distance from their fence to the closest townhome block will be approximately twenty, a hundred and twenty feet, over a third of a football field, if you can visualize that. Much further than typical subdivision homes that are typically adjacent to each other. I can't help but wonder if that same concern would be raised if it were two-story homes on quarter-acre lots that were being proposed. Secondly, I would address the concern of decreased property values raised by residents of both Black Stallion and the Meadows. As a Realtor, I have access to the MLS. And for comparison, I have looked at the sales histories of homes near both the Tulamore Townhome Development as well as homes in the Fieldstone that are close proximity to the apartment complex at Seringa and Pole Line. Bearing in mind, this is not an apartment project we're discussing here tonight. I'm simply using that as an example. Homes in both these areas have followed the same real estate trends of the past two years. Excuse me, the properties have followed all over Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene, meaning their sales prices have increased along with the rest of the market. Homes in both Tulamore and Fieldstone have sold from the lower five hundreds to over eight hundred thousand in the past two years. So the fears of decreased property values are unfounded and speculative. There's simply no proof that this project would negatively impact the property values of neighboring homes. If having a railroad track within a hundred feet of or even adjacent to a property doesn't affect its value, then being near an upscale, attractive, well-designed and executed townhome project certainly will not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And now those opposed, in opposition, not wishing to, wishing to speak, Axel Arter Brewster. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Rob and Brenda Erickson. We read these in, Warren.
Post Falls Councilmembers and Mayor Jacobson. I am writing today in opposition to the Hargrave Hathaway Annexation. My name is Brenda Erickson. My husband and I are thirty-year residents of Post Falls and thirty-year business owners in Coeur d'Alene. We currently live at twenty-five ninety-eight North Ash, Ash Raff Court, Post Falls and Black Stallion Ranch on a four-tenth of an acre lot with a single home. The Planning Commission is asking you to approve an RM zoning on nine point six-three acre parcel to accommodate seventy-seven to eighty townhomes a short distance away. The description says the lot size will be between two thousand and to three thousand square feet in zero lotline configuration. This does not comply with the comprehensive plan, future land use map for this area as it is bordered by R-one and R-one S developments on three sides. This is more like high-density housing, not single-family housing. The proposed commercial space does not make sense in this location. It's Pole Line is, is minor arterial with projected volumes of seventeen hundred vehicles per day in twenty twenty-five and three thousand per day in twenty thirty-five, not four thousand as the plan recommends. This sets up a commercial business relying on local traffic to not be attracted to this location. The proposed open space of seven percent is chopped up into small pieces that will be unusable. They are also adjacent to parking areas surrounding the commercial area. Some open spaces are bordering railroad tracks and some bordering Pole Line seems to pose safety concerns. Excuse me, safety concerns. Pole Line is not currently set up to handle more traffic as it dead-ends to the west. To southwest enters another R-one neighborhood with railroad crossing and a school zone. To the east intersects with Chase and to get to Seltice, you must pass another railroad crossing and school zone. If you take Pole Line to Spokane Street to get to Seltice I ninety, you enter another school zone. These roads, all, these roads, all minor arterials not yet developed to handle more traffic. An RM development makes more sense closer to major collector roads and city centers. The Central Prairie Focus Area says, focus multifamily along Prairie Avenue, focus commercial development along Prairie Avenue and near identified commercial loads and support provisions for a variety of housing types and densities. This is a par, this is parcel is adjacent to Pole Line Avenue, not Prairie Avenue. I believe the property owners are entitled to ask for a zone change, but the city council is also entitled to reject the plan and ask them to comply with the current comprehensive plan that clearly places this into the R-one category for development. We're asking our city council to do just that, keep our area R-one. Thank you. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Linda Johnson. I and my husband live in the Black Stallion subdivision, which is a pleasant, low-density neighborhood. Now a developer has applied to build a high-density, large apartment complex a block away with the road connected to our subdivision. This will lead to heavy traffic noise and a lot of safety issues. This significant, significantly, this significant amount of traffic is a great worry to us. I oppose this rezoning. And I believe we're not looking at apartments on this.
Mayor, I might, that first one was a little bit long. I was looking at our rules. Typically, the, the short-written comments that we allow to, for the, the chair, the mayor, to read in, typically a couple hundred words long.
Okay.
If you have some that are longer than that, and I don't know how long all of these are, some of them are probably shorter, some are probably longer. I think you have the, the authority to essentially have them come up and read them so that you're not doing it or having them testify. The idea is that when you're doing it, it should be brief so that we're not having to make you read all night long.
Okay. Thank you. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Karen Godak. When following description for when or where the RM zone is, is appropriate, I believe that it fails three or four criteria. One, areas readily serviced by streets suitable for higher levels of traffic. Two, existing cul-de-sacs hardly constitute suitable streets to accommodate the proposed plan.
Two, existing cul-de-sacs hardly constitute suitable streets to accommodate the proposed plan. Three, areas where public services are sufficient for intensity of uses. Adding seventy-seven townhomes, houses in this area will add to the already overburdened services. Areas, and, uh, four areas where existing neighborhood, neighboring land uses are compatible. The existing neighborhoods that this would connect to are two homes per acre. Attaching a housing community with seven homes per acre is in no way consistent. Those of us who purchased or built homes did so with the goal of having a quiet neighborhood. The availability of truly quiet neighborhood in Post Falls is rapidly diminishing. It is the single most common complaint I hear from people in this town. I implore you to consider the needs of the current residents instead of the builder-developers who are not tasked with living in the neighborhoods they're decimating. This proposal is far from beneficial to the existing neighborhoods in this area. Not wishing to testify in app, opposition is Joseph Mitchell. And this is a letter, I think I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, read it, Warren. Feel free to start me on the timer, and if I reach the limit, tell me and I'll quit.
Okay.
In response to several items on the staff presentation, as found on the city website, this plan will not retain existing quality of life assets. This proposed neighborhood is surrounded by low-density, single-family residential neighborhoods. It is immediately adjacent to and will connect to two neighborhoods with one single-family home per acre. The corresponding increase in population density and taxing of infrastructure and resources is a decrease in quality of life for existing residents. This plan does not improve Post Falls' small-town scale, charm, and aesthetic beauty. Overcrowding and overpopulating the city is not charming and not aesthetically pleasing. It is repulsive for anyone wanting a legitimate small-town feel. Open space and fewer homes are charming, aesthetically pleasing, and in keeping with the small-town scale. The physical size of the town doesn't really matter if the population density diminishes the experience. It isn't sustainable to continue to overpopulate and overcrowd the city if the goal is small-town scale, charm, and aesthetic beauty. Additional rooftops and housing units in this area will not add to the vibrancy of Post Falls. It would look like an out-of-place pocket of overcrowding in a sea of low-density housing. Street connectivity is good where it makes sense. However, adding seventy-seven condos and the associated vehicle and pedestrian traffic to a small residential road like Miss Hannah Avenue does not improve the transportation network. It will increase traffic levels by a factor of more than four. This will cause substantial congestion on the roads and decrease safety. Many families in the Berkshire and Black Stallion Ranch neighborhoods have children. Increasing the traffic on Miss Hannah Avenue by a factor of more than four will substantially decrease safety for the children in these neighborhoods and pedestrian traffic in general. Miss Hannah Avenue doesn't have any traffic control mechanism. Without traffic control mechanisms and enforcements, I fail to see how adding four times more traffic to a small residential road is an improvement. The current lack of enforcement of traffic infractions on this stretch of Pole Line Avenue speaks to how incapable current services are of managing the inevitable massive increase in traffic. Also, what walkability, also what walkability does connecting this neighborhood to the existing Miss Hannah Avenue accomplish? The end of the potential Miss Hannah and the end of Ash Raff Court will terminate a Pole Line Avenue with no corresponding pedestrian infrastructure on Pole Line. Both sides of the potential Miss Hannah and Ashcraft Court horseshoe terminate on property that is not part of the city. Unless you also implement a pedestrian crossing over Pole Line at the potential Miss Hannah end or on the Ashcraft Court end, then there is nowhere to walk to, to, that amounts to continued safe walkability. I walk along Ashcraft Court, Ash Raff Court, and cross over Pole Line every day. It isn't what I would call safe and the only alternative. Walking along Pole Line with no pedestrian infrastructure is far less so. Connecting the Berkshire neighborhood with this new development does not improve, improve the pedestrian experience at all. This plan does not protect or maintain Post Falls' natural resources. The math on this doesn't make sense. The Black Stallion neighborhood alone is roughly the same physical size of this proposed annexation. There are eighteen homes and eighteen families in Black Stallion. How can multiplying the number of families on the same physical area using the same natural resources by more than four result in less taxation on our natural resources compared to less dense housing? There really isn't a single natural resource on the list in the presentation that is protected or maintained by adding a seventy-seven condo development to this area. Light and noise pollution will increase substantially. Higher density development will, higher, uh, density development will taxyographer and river far more.
Mayor, time's up.
Then, thank you, then lower density. Thank you. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Laura Schlenker. My main concerns are traffic and parking. Pole Line is classified as a minor arterial and cannot handle the additional traffic if this is approved. The elementary, elementary school is just down the street on Clark Fork Parkway, which is already inundated with many vehicles. If Hannah's continued out to Pole Line, there will be a major traffic coming and going daily down our quiet street. The future land use map shows all of the entire surrounding area as low-density residential. Why approve to slam seventy-seven townhome apartments right in the middle of all these homes? Please do not approve this request. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Jody Chapel. When moving to Post Falls twenty-one years ago, we enjoyed the small-town and quiet-town atmosphere. The past five years, this has changed. Our quiet town and quiet streets have disappeared. Every area in this city now has apartments or duplexes or townhouses. Our street is not set up for additional traffic. Please do not allow this development to come into the area. I have grandkids to visit and won't be able to let them play in our neighborhood. In opposition, in opposition, uh, not wishing to speak, Angela Schlenker. Residential mess, mix with townhomes are not compatible with the surrounding areas as all the surrounding areas are R1 and R1S. Pole Line is designated as minor arterial and cannot handle all the traffic from seventy-seven townhomes, lots and one commercial lot on less than ten acres. Pole Line also ends at a field at the west property line of said property. The elementary school is just down the street. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Scott Chappell. Chappell Chapel, did I? It's, it's gotta be one of the two. No, no, I'll read, I just wanted to make sure I got your name right. Okay. No, that, that's right, I just wanted to pronounce his name properly. I keep wondering when the greed of this council will slow down enough to seriously look at what you're allowing to happen to this community. We have enough apartments and high-density housing for the time being, not to mention the roads are not set up for the traffic you are bringing. Our road is definitely not set up for this increase. You seem to not care, and if you ruin every neighborhood in Post Falls, just keep on making your money. You know, I'm gonna take personal exception to that. There's not one council member, nor myself, that makes a nickel from any of this. So for people to accuse us of lining our pockets with annexations and approval, zone changes, you're absolutely out of line, so just understand that. Harlan Schlenker, uh, does not wish to speak in opposition. This proposed development does not meet criteria, uh, criteria for consistent, for consistency with future land use map, and owner acknowledges that city has no duty to annex a property. All surrounding areas are designated R1 and R, R1S and R1. Even the current farmland, pole line, even the current farmland. Pole Line Avenue is classified by the city as minor arterial and cannot support more traffic. West Ridge Elementary is less than a quarter mile to the south, and where Pole Line Avenue ends at Clark Fork Parkway. It is twenty-four feet wide with no shoulder or sidewalk. This is not safe for anyone walking to or from school, and this proposed develop, excuse me, this proposed development. Uh, why would the city approve this complex, having Miss Hannah Avenue connected to this without requiring its own separate ingress and egress? With these, will these units be required to have fire sprinkler and fire alarm system installed? When they propose up to six units connected, there is a definite risk involved. There are only thirty-two overflow parking stalls showing on the preliminary. Does the city really believe that it's, that, that is adequate to prevent excess parking on Pole Line, Miss Hannah, and Ash Raff Court? Where is the design for these units? Will they be equipped with two stall garages? What happened to our once-quiet, light-traffic prairie town? This development is better suited for Beck Road and West Point Parkway with the other apartments. Because, call it what they might, they will be rented out and the owners will be nowhere to be found. Please do not allow traffic to flow through. Uh, in opposition, not wishing to speak, Dustin Gilmore. Seventy-seven townhomes in such a tight area with no additional infrastructure will make this unbelievably terrible. Getting to the main part of town is one road, Pole Line. As a resident of Black Stallion Ranch, trafficking the mornings east on Pole Line and west towards West Ridge Elementary would be horrendous. This many units, so close, is a terrible idea. Strongly oppose this plan. Something with a quarter to a half-acre lots would be more compatible. In opposition, not wishing to speak, Christina Gilmore. I strongly oppose adding any townhouses to such a small, compact area. There is no room for that many vehicles, and traffic will end up being awful with only one way out towards town. Jason, may I have you start the timer again?
Okay.
Uh, not wishing to speak in app, in opposition, Manuela Armbruster, Arm Brewster. Dear councilmembers, I'd like you to read my letter for me, since I'm way too upset and emotional right now to talk. My name is Manuela Armbruster, and I live at fourteen eighty West Broadmore Court in Post Falls. We purchased our property in two thousand and thirteen, and our decision to build on a one-acre parcel lot with railroad tracks south of our backyard, thinking if somebody would build south of us, it would remain low-density and R1 housing, like it has been all around us, and to this day still is. The proposed RM development with, with close to eighty townhouses on nine point six-two acres and fifteen of them along the fence line would mean directly south, east, and west of our backyard, a wall of houses and concrete, which means our privacy would be totally gone. I don't think the proposed development fit the Post Falls' growth plan at all, especially for this area. Pole Line Avenue is already overcrowded and a mess day and night. I don't even want to imagine how bad it would be moving forward with this development. The infrastructure cannot handle these many more vehicles. There is also a concern with the value of the residential properties surrounding the development dropping dramatically. The small-town feel, as well as the aesthetic beauty of this area, will be destroyed. While the local community may not be able to prevent development, developments and growth, which would be detrimental to this area in, in and of itself. Nearly all residents in the neighborhood are opposed to the addition of townhouses. The proposed development is completely out of proportion for this neighborhood. It will change the character of the area completely. I hope they took into consideration that there is a fifty-foot right, right way for the gas line company, or if they have it, will be even less than nine point six-five acres they have available to build on. It's a community that will be left to deal, it is a community that will be left to deal with the results of their decision, while the developers and land sellers pocket the profit and leave us with the mess they created out of greed. Why don't they consider continuing what has been stated with the subdivision, started with the subdivisions like Meadows, Prairie Meadows, Black Stallion, Montrose, and Berkshire, which are upper-scale, single, single-family homes, all zoned R1 and R1S? Why putting an ISO like the seventy-five-plus townhouses pressed on nine point six-five acres in the middle of R1 zone developments? This is just about money for them and nothing else. They don't have to pretend they are doing something good for the community and for the people who can't afford buying houses, laughable. The decision made by the Zoning and Building Commission to approve the proposed R1, uh, RM development was frustrating and shocking to most of us living in this neighborhood. We are devastated, and I'm asking the Post Falls City Council to take into account the concerns of the residents around the proposed RM development. Please do not empower these developers to destroy our and our children's lifestyle, which we've worked so hard to accomplish. We are all counting on you, our city council, that you will see through this unbelievable proposal and that you'll keep your promise you made to the residents of Post Falls when you were running on slow-growth Post Falls. I also urge you to encourage these developers to rethink their plans for something more suitable for the area. Thank you for your continued services and support. Uh, in opposition, not wishing to speak, Helen Long. We bought our house because of the nice, quiet neighborhood. Had we known there was any possibility of townhomes, condos, or apartments building going up, we would have looked elsewhere. Not wishing to speak in opposition is Marvin Long. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Matt Foreman and, uh, Tori Lennox, Lemmicks? We are strongly opposed to the annexation project. We feel that adding seventy-seven townhomes plus commercial space is not right for our community. This project will drastically impact traffic in our quiet community, and it does not fit with the surrounding single-family residential homes. We would have ten-plus townhomes immediately over our fence. We do not believe this project should proceed. It will negatively impact traffic and degrade the surrounding community. This is not the right development for this small area. Wishing to testify, uh, in opposition, Kenny Johnson? Would you hand that to, do you have a copy, or do you want this back?
No, I've got a copy here.
Name for the record, please.
Okay, I have, uh, I'm a builder, but I've built a lot out, Meadows and...
Name for the record, and would you move over to the microphone so they can pick you up, please?
Yeah. I'm a builder, I've been a builder. I, uh, did different subdivisions here. I built at the Meadows, I lived in the Meadows. I don't see anything wrong with that.
Can you give your name for the record, please?
Pardon?
Give your name for the record.
Ken Johnson.
Thank you, Ken.
River Park Plaza Builders.
Thank you.
But I'm retired now. I, uh, I don't know if any of you know me, but, uh, maybe, uh... I live in, uh, in the Meadow, not in the Meadows now, I live in, in, uh... And... Black Stallion Ranch. I built a house there. I, uh, sold my house in the Meadows. I, uh, I restore old cars, is what, I, that's my business, or my hobby now. I, uh, like living there. I like living there, and, uh, I, uh... I'm not prepared here. I'm a, against this, uh, against this, uh, annexation because it, uh, it doesn't, doesn't fit in with the other homes, and it's, uh... The traffic in Post Falls now is, is not good. I, uh... And I don't like, uh, we have enough building going on here now. Every place you go, there's building, uh, apartments or something, which is, is fine. But do we need them? Do we really need them? And I don't know, uh, I'm from the old school, and the old school was a pretty good school. It was a pretty good school. It, uh, but it wasn't all about money. Wasn't all about money. It's, it was about, uh, living your life and taking care of your kids and going to basketball games and, and having a good time. But I'm not for this because of the amount of, uh, traffic it's gonna bring in, and the, uh... Just, uh, just the traffic. Uh, you know, and I don't mind, uh, people making money. We all gotta make money to, to live on. But, uh, you know, uh, this seventy-seven townhouses is, that's obnoxious. But, you know, this seventy-seven townhouses is, that's obnoxious. That's, and half of them will probably be rented at one time or just bought for rentals. I don't know. It's, and I'm not trying to be a jerk or a-hole, but...
Your time's up. Could you wrap it up for us, please?
Okay. Well, thank you for listening to me. I, I thought I was more prepared than I am, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, wishing to speak in opposition Willie Spickler? Spicker? Spicken? I'm gonna let you give your name for the record, then I'm gonna know.
Yeah, you're gonna know. My name is Willie Spicker. I live at one five zero seven West Staples Road in the Meadows neighborhood and I'm opposed to this, not so much the development of the land, but the proposal of what they want to put up there, seventy-seven townhomes. I don't want to butt right up against this, but I don't know what this is going to do from a visual standpoint. Am I going to have to look at the back of these things? I consider that visual pollution. I also think this is going to create a major traffic increase, not only in the, the Black Stallion Connected Road that they're talking about, but also on McGuire and Chase. Where's that traffic going to go? When it wants to go east to either Cordillane or into Pulse Falls, some of that's probably going to overflow on the Grange, which is already a traffic nightmare due to the development of the Meadow Grove neighborhood, which was done several years ago. Parking, I think, is also a potential problem. If there's not enough, or if the lots with seventy-seven townhomes are pretty small, you know, most people or most families these days have at least two vehicles. Sometimes there's more than that, okay? Depending on how many kids might be involved in a fam, or part of a family. So you've got multiple vehicles that have to be parked somewhere, okay? So there's a potential for overflow, maybe not so much into my neighborhood, but certainly in the other neighborhoods around there. And I know that like in Meadow Grove at the east end of Staples Road, sometimes driving through there when I want to go to town from where I live, you know, there's three or four cars parked on one side, there's three or four cars and commercial vehicles parked on the other side and there's not much of a street left to drive down. I think single-family homes would fit better in this particular area, not seventy-seven townhomes. Put in, you know, two or three homes per acre that are single-family homes. If you really want to build these townhomes, take it down to the other end of Pulse Falls where Cabello's is, where they're building all these ugly apartments and put the townhomes in that part of the town. Thanks. That's all I got.
No, no, sir. Please, no comments. You're fine, Willie. Thank you. We can't have comments from the crowd. We pick everything up and record it, so. Wishing to speak in opposition Lynn Collett?
Hi, my name is Lynn Collett. My husband and I live at two nine six zero North Radiant Star Road in the Prairie Meadows subdivision. We've called Pulse Falls our home for the last six years. We are opposed to the development of seventy-seven townhomes on nine point six-three acres for the following reasons, the first of which is the traffic. The traffic at the intersection of Poline and Chase is becoming more congested every day. The cars are already lining up to go through the stop sign. The traffic will become much worse with the development of this project with the main entrance and exit coming from these two streets. My husband and I also feel this development would be very disruptive for the people living in the Black Stallion development. This is a quiet neighborhood with many families that would be impacted by the flow of cars going in and out of the townhome complex. We also feel that the home values of all of the current developments would be affected by an affordable income development of this type. I also wonder if this project will be safe or desirable with the large Yellowstone pipeline running across the front of the entire development. We believe the R-one zoning designation would be a much better fit and blend with the existing homes and development in the area. If we, if we all want a cohesive city, we can be proud of townhomes, condos or apartments are not the appropriate fit for, for this location. We're counting on the city council to please represent us as a community and vote no on this project and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Gary Alvarado?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Gary Alvarado. I live at two four four three North Ashraf Court in the Black Stallion neighborhood. I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing as well. I distinctly remember the chairman mentioning that there was not a lot of facts being brought forth, but that we were emotional. I think that this subject is an emotional subject for all of us that are in opposition. I've heard the platitudes from those that are desiring to, to build concerning giving back to the community. Talked about a price point and I've asked, what does it mean when they say affordable housing? Government subsidized homes would be affordable housing for those that live here now, but what's that price point? Five hundred thousand? Four hundred thousand? Hundred thousand? Who knows? It's up to them. But what is affordable to us that live here? I know that I couldn't buy my home today as it is. Thank God that I bought when I could. I've lived here a long time and growth is inevitable. When I came back after my Air Force stint, there was huge changes in this area. So I've been in Idaho since nineteen sixty-nine. I have a couple of things, just ten principles of urban planning. I have a master's degree in public administration and urban planning. I just recall that development has to be sensible. Development has to be common sense and it has to be aesthetically pleasing to the surrounding community. This is all residential homes. Why would we put high-density homes right in the middle of residential homes, single-family homes? We talked about, let me see if I can find it. We talked about traffic and parking. So let me just give you a visual. This is going down Clark Fork Road, southbound from Poline. And it's just human nature to do this. Take a look at the vehicles that are parked all along here. They use their gar, their garages for storage. That's understandable. This is just before the kids are being picked up. A lot of these vehicles are homeowners on this side. They're, these are their vehicles. We talked about the districts, or the, this other gentleman was talking about the path of least resistance. This is one of the path of least resistance. Who wants to go back east when you can go south? This is Midway, coming up to Midway. Talk about congestion. And now we're taking a right and headed to Midway. And the developments going on over here as proposed in the development plan.
Gary, you're right at the end of your time. Can you wrap it up or is that it?
That's it. I just wanted to say the first principle is engage the community. They know what's best and what they need and you guys are part of that community. So please, vote no.
Thank you. Next up, wishing to speak in opposition Cindy Widman?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Widman. I live at eighteen seventy-five West Evening Star Road and I just want to say the happiest parties here for the annexation is Hathaway's and Hargrove. And for that property would be ideal if you got ahold of Monarch or Aspen Quality Builders, ten homes with acre each or even twenty homes with a half acre each. You know, everybody would be just happy and I have friends that want to move back up here from Idaho Falls and we're talking all that too. And that's another concern on affordable housing. It turns into rentals and eventually people, most of the majority of people just start trashing things and that would be an eyesore. But I want to say if I were a developer, I'd look for property already zoned where I can build with my blueprint plans. For instance, this is what I've always thought anyway. A great property location is on Mullen Road in between Walmart and Garden Plaza, which is the retirement complex. It's already zoned and can showcase your townhouse blueprint plans. Mullen Road in that vicinity can accommodate the heavier traffic flow easily for the hundred forty-plus cars from the seventy-plus townhomes and has easy access for fire trucks. Residents of the townhomes would appreciate the convenient location to shopping, restaurants, schools and the freeway access. As a resident of Prairie Meadows, I strongly oppose the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up wishing to speak in opposition Samantha Stiglitter?
Sorry if you had to see that mom finger come out there. Samantha Stiglitter, Nob Creek. Hi again. So I am in opposition to this. I got the X there for a second, huh? There we go. I have a little slideshow. I'm going to try to get through four minutes. So, I have not done a PowerPoint since like college. Is that the button that I want? Yeah, cool. Okay, so as far as the annexation goes, I know we have two questions, right? Annexation and then zoning. The annexation seems reasonable. It's sort of infill, it's like in the middle, but sort of at the edge, so it doesn't seem like it would be a terrible idea to annex it in. However, it is in the Central Prairie focus area, which Mr. Manley kind of pointed out. He did show a couple of these points that are listed on the Development Department report. I think that was the title of the page that I was looking at. But it's that focus area is supposed to have multifamily along Prairie Avenue, which this is not high density, but it's still multifamily and this is Poline, not Prairie. And then the commercial development that they were talking about is also supposed to be along Prairie, but again, we're talking about Poline. So we don't actually think that it meets the focus area of Central Prairie, although if you do read all of the words in that area, there's a lot of like very vague language that's like, as the city changes, we can kind of just do whatever. But as it's listed out like that, I don't think that it's correct. Okay. And then it's low density, turkeys. It's low density, so it can be R-one S, R-one, R-two, RM or SC-three. So they're requesting the RM. Don't think it's really great. It doesn't fit with the surrounding development, which we've heard like a bunch. But there's really like, it's not bringing anything to the area, right? They're not offering any parks. They're maybe offering some more walking, but that's really it. And I'm not sure if we're not going to do R-one and they do want more affordable products, maybe we could do R-two where they're actually twin homes, so they're just that one product. Creates more green space, smaller buildings and then they're also purchasable, I think. Is that correct, Mr. Manley? Like the twin homes, you can buy and own the property. So I think that's actually more beneficial to the owners and to the community. Okay, so I might have goofed and we can talk about it later, but I pulled all of the goals and policies as listed in the long agenda and went through them to talk about why. I don't think they are met or they are met. We can go through this really fast. I don't think that they met any of the goals, to be quite honest. Safe, vital and attractive, I do appreciate the definitions, but I don't think that it was proven that what is offered will be more safe, more vital or more attractive than what could be put there with the surrounding zoning. And then transportation network, I mean, was there a goal that we were trying to meet as far as a transportation network? This, this was meeting because I don't think that that was stated. Everything that's in this has its type and equality, quantity, so that's like very vague language, but there's nothing demonstrating that the RM annexation would support like the needs of hous, except for we use this very vague term that like we have a housing shortage, but we say that about everything. Increases density, so is it really protecting any natural resources? So then Goal Ten has more really vague language in it. The city, does it meet? How does this meet parks and rec? Like this proposed thing doesn't have any parks or recreation for Pulse Falls or the people that are going to live there or the surrounding area. And so I said zero out of six goals. We can go through the policies really fast. I gave them some credit for policy two. You can read through them, I'm sure you've already read through them, but I said four point seven, four point seven-five out of seven policies. I'm learning, we have to talk about goals and policies. I got it. So I looked at them, I tried to address them with fourteen seconds left. The crosswalks on Chase are not lighted, so if we're going to add seventy-seven families to this area, I feel like all the crosswalks on Chase, which is how they would get in and out of the area, should have flashers on them. Cool.
Thank you.
Done. Thanks.
Doug Williams wishing to speak in opposition.
I want to thank you all for keeping your eye on the clock. That is a huge help.
My name is Douglas Williams. I live at fifteen fifty-seven Broadwater Court and I'm opposed to this annexation, the Hargrave Hathaway annexation. This plan does not meet state or local planning guides or criteria. According to Idaho Code sixty-seven, chapter sixty-five, paragraph G, the planning guide is to quote, "avoid undue concentration of population and overcrowding of land." This concentration of housing is unjustified. According to Idaho Code sixty-seven, chapter sixty-five, zero eight, Planning Duties, paragraph I, the provision is for quote, "safe housing." This plan is anything but safe when you consider the amount of traffic in such a small space. According to the City of Pulse Falls, principal use and character of low-density residential housing, quote, "planned development should be compatible with existing development." As you can see, eight units per acre is not compatible with the surrounding R-one S and R-one housing. According to the Pulse Falls Zone Change Review Criteria C, zoning is assigned following consideration of existing development. This plan does not meet your criteria. According to the City of Pulse Falls' Zoning Review Criteria One and Two, amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan's Future Land Use map. The entire focus area surrounding this annexation is R-one S and R-one. This does not meet your criteria. According to the City of Pulse Falls' Zoning Review Criteria Three, quote, "zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as traffic patterns and existing development." This annexation does not meet the criteria and is certainly not safe due to traffic patterns. I don't know who came up with your definition of low-density housing, but I think eight units per acre is not low-density. If we were living in New York, Chicago or LA with densities at two thousand plus units per acre, low-density would be three hundred, but we aren't in New York or Chicago. Low-density housing to me means less crowding, more privacy. It also means fewer vehicles, more open spaces and an environment that's much, much cleaner and healthier. This term describes the type of housing with a very low number of housing units on any residential block or a smaller number of families per acre in a housing community. Exclusiveness is the word that best describes low-density living. A sense of spaciousness and non-intrusiveness pervades the whole project. Low-density homes means a serene and peaceful living environment with more space. People can enjoy privacy while living in a community of like-minded people. With few residences, even the roads remain free from congestion. Does this Hargrave Hathaway annexation project fit my description of low-density housing? It certainly fits your description, maybe, of low-density housing. In fact, the language in the criteria for consideration for any project is so arbitrary that anyone could do almost anything anywhere in Pulse Falls and it would fit the criteria. This project would be like trying to make polka dots match on a plaid shirt. It would be putting an unsightly pimple on the face of the surrounding R-one and R-one S community. Just take a look at what surrounds this proposed project. Just take a look at what surrounds this proposed project. Thank you for listening. I think you should vote no.
Thank you. Wishing, no, no. Thank you. Wishing to testify in opposition, Ava Domon.
Good evening. Some facts.
Name for the record.
Oh, Ava Domon. I reside at 1557 West Broadwater Court.
Thank you.
Some facts. There's 15,000 and some parcels in Post Falls. Of those parcels, almost 1,500 are bare land totaling 3,300 acres. There are almost 200 parcels that are five acres or more totaling over 4,000 acres. Do we really need to annex this land? Let's talk about safety for a moment. The developer painted this Starbucks vision where people go to the coffee shop and can enjoy that. For a business to sustain itself, needs to bring in about $1,000 worth of revenue per day. Let's say a cup of coffee's four bucks. That's 250 people coming into that Starbucks-like business. Now let's multiply that by four or five businesses. You've got 1,000 people. Are they walking? Are they driving? That's 1,000 people per day in that commercial area. Those 40 homes near the commercial building could likely safely enjoy a walk to the coffee shop. But let's look at the crosswalks on Pole Line between Chase and Maguire. There are none. The street doesn't even go through, and I think I heard the bridge would be ready in about eight or 10 years. The 300 homes south of Pole Line have to cross Pole Line with no crosswalk, since the closest crosswalk for them sits at Compton Street. That's .75 miles away to go up Pole Line, cross at the crosswalk, and come back to the other side of the street. No one's going to do that. They're going to just walk across the street. Safety. Anyone north of the railroad tracks, some 500 homes near the proposed parcel will have to take their life in their hands, walking on Chase, because there is no sidewalk for a majority of that walk. Growing up, we learned by association. Imagine a picture with seven cars and one green car. Which one is different? Can you see seven American flags and one gray dish towel? It just, the flying flags and the dish towel just don't fit together. Neither does this project. The surrounding areas for at least a mile in any direction are zoned R1. This doesn't fit. Brett Hargrave's email to the City of Post Falls on September 2021 to the planner said, "Our concept is not what we typically see happening right in this area, right now in this area." Even the developer acknowledges this one doesn't fit. Thank you for considering that this is a square peg in a round hole and doesn't fit.
Thank you. Next up is Kevin O'Neill.
Good evening, City Council. Kevin O'Neill, I reside at 1452 Broadwater Court. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal to annex, for the city to annex the Hargrave Hathaway properties and designate it as a residential mixed zoning classification. An RM zoning designation for these properties clearly violates the City of Post Falls Comprehensive Plan and is clearly not in the best interest of the city. Pursuant to the Post Falls Land Use Map, and that's Figure 2.03 of the Comprehensive Plan, it clearly states, it's designated the entire area surrounding this property as low-density, R1 housing. The proposal to put 77 townhomes and a commercial property in the middle of low-density housing is clearly not in accordance with that future land use map, which my family relied upon when we were looking at places to live. And part of the reason why we moved to the Post Falls is because we heard it was a beautiful city, which it is. The Meadows, the Prairie Meadows, the Black Stallion neighborhood are some of the most sought-after neighborhoods in the city. And to completely revamp that whole configuration with this proposal would, is not in accordance with that, and again, the city's own Comprehensive Plan. There, as Commissioner Hamm noted at the last meeting on July 25th, there are plenty of places around the city for high-density housing and for commercial development. You see it on Spokane Street, you see it on Highway 41, you see it along the I-91 corridor, corridor, you see part of it on Greens Ferry. There's ample opportunities for low, you know, affordable housing, low-income housing in the city. And the plan allows for that. There's no need to completely disrupt and deviate from a plan that already makes sense. We've talked a lot about the goals. Your constituents here today have talked a lot about the goals in the Comprehensive Plan. You know, one of them is to maintain and improve the provision of high-quality, affordable, and efficient community services in Post Falls. We've talked about the impact that this proposal would have on traffic, on issues of safety. There's a railroad that buttresses this property. Not just vehicle traffic, but also pedestrian traffic is at issue here. Another goal is to maintain and improve the Post Falls' small-town scale charm and aesthetic beauty. Well, the addition of 77 townhomes and a commercial property on less than 10 acres in this particular part of the city is not in keeping with small-town charm. A plethora of townhomes jammed in the middle of a single-family homes will look incredibly out of place and will not promote the aesthetic beauty of the city. Indeed, such a development is antithetical to the existing low-density, single-family residential zoning in the area, and would make this part of the city look disorganized and chaotic. This is not Houston, Texas. This is not New York City. This is Post Falls, Idaho. Third, another of the land use and housing goals specified in the Comprehensive Plan is to keep Post Falls neighborhoods safe, vital, and attractive. Again, the addition of 77 townhomes and a commercial property on this piece of land would adversely impact the safety and attractiveness of the community through various means, including but not limited to increased vehicular and pedestrian traffic, increased noise levels, and diminished privacy. There hasn't been a lot of talk about privacy, but certainly we've relied upon this. And I just want to note, Councilman Ziegler, you specifically ran and were elected on a platform of preserving the hometown feel of Post Falls. You specifically advocated for increased citizen participation and decision-making and slow growth. Councilman Shubb, you were elected on a campaign.
I'm going to let you finish, but don't keep going. You made your point, but your time is up.
Okay. And just lastly, again, I implore you to vote against this decision. At the very least, if you can't bring yourself to do that, I ask you to table this action item and allow more due diligence on this and honor your commitments to your constituents. Thank you very much.
Next up is Jeanne O'Neill. Someone's unhappy because they got dead, huh?
Hopefully she'll be okay for four minutes.
That's what her favorite is.
No comment. Mayor Jacobson and the City Council, I guess I just want to make a few quick points.
Give us your name for the record.
Sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Jeanne O'Neill. I live at 1452 Broadwater Court in Post Falls. And I just wanted to point out a few things that I just noticed regarding traffic. So one of our big concerns, obviously, you've heard a lot tonight about worries about traffic and increased traffic. The first one is just that when we were at the Planning Commission meeting, it was stated that the traffic counts that were used to do the projections for how many cars would be coming through on this road was done in 2014. And I don't think anyone probably could have predicted the growth of Post Falls. And so I question how accurate those traffic counts are, the projected traffic counts for those roads. I think it's probably a lot higher than was stated tonight. And also, the, to kind of keep traffic flowing along Pole Line at that area, I think there's going to have to be the addition of a bridge at one end to connect it to Maguire. And the intersection of Chase and Pole Line right now is pretty, it's actually already pretty busy. I've waited there several times for several minutes to get my kids to school in the morning. It's already a busy intersection. And I think it would be, probably to improve that intersection, quite a cost to the taxpayers, to add a bridge at the other end, quite a cost to the taxpayers. And I haven't heard any discussion of the developers possibly kicking in some money instead of the taxpayers bearing the brunt of, you know, any improvements along that road. So, and also, the traffic along Grange is already pretty heavy. That's probably the closest thoroughfare to go from Chase to Maguire. And tonight it was stated that the two closest parks are going to be in the Meadows, or in Prairie Meadows. And so to get to those parks, which are going to be servicing this new development, if it goes through, that's going to be more traffic onto Grange, where a lot of children live, where the bus stops are, and things like that. So those are some of my concerns, just with traffic. And I know the issue of privacy has come up a few times, and honestly, that's my biggest concern. I'm a mom of many children, many young children. One of whom is in the audience tonight. And one of the reasons we made an unconventional choice to buy a piece of land next to a train track, I think some people thought we were a little crazy when we said we're, you know, we have trains going through our backyard. But we value our privacy. We value our children's privacy. That's our job as parents, is to fiercely protect our children's privacy. And, you know, we could have chosen to have a neighbor looking into our backyard, but we chose to do something a little unconventional, which we actually love. We love the trains that go by. But we really wanted our children to be able to grow up in a carefree way, to play tag, to, you know, run in the sprinkler, to do all the things kids do in a carefree childhood way. And so when I found out, you know, that this property was being developed, I think we always kind of knew an empty piece of land would probably be developed. But to hear that it was going to be townhouses, and many townhouses with a height restriction of 35 feet, to me, that's very upsetting, the idea that there will be, against my fence line, eight townhouses. Eight different families, or eight different groups of roommates, eight different, you know, looking down into my backyard where my children play, where tonight during this meeting, they were having a picnic in the backyard with their grandparents. You know, it's important to us to maintain that privacy. So, you know, thank you for your consideration tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And just so you know, and it doesn't answer all the questions, but you made a comment about the developer not paying anything towards the streets.
I just haven't.
They pay impact fees.
Okay, I hadn't heard anything about it. And last, last time we went to the Planning Commission meeting, they had talked for other annexations about what the developer contributed, and I just didn't hear it. So, I apologize if I misspoke.
No problem, no problem. Just want to let, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last up tonight, Tyler Morton.
Hi there. Tyler Morton, live at 1340 West Miss Hannah, here in Post Falls. You know, I think probably the consensus is, if this was R1, this meeting would be a lot shorter. You know, I think if they were seeking an R1 annexation, it'd be a lot shorter. There wouldn't be near the people in opposition. The fact of, you know, potentially 77 townhomes, it's scary. Scary for a lot of people. You know, I know research says different things about, you know, evaluations, this, that, the other. But it's still scary to think. Scary to think that we'd put that many units off of Pole Line that's essentially kind of a dead-end street right now. Heading right down towards a, as Mr., sorry if I butcher your last name, Alvarado showed going there through the school zone. Or heading back to Chase, to head down Chase to another school zone. I think it'd be poor planning, really do. The other thing, I just wonder, you know, low cost. Everybody knows that inflation's at an all-time high right now. Price of materials are high, costs of labor are high. You know, there's probably a million-dollar, million-dollar improvements to be done along Pole Line. And that's even before you get into the project. And then you start developing that project, putting in infrastructure for 77 townhomes and a commercial building. I just wonder, how affordable is it really going to be? You know, are we going to sell these townhomes in the 250s that the locals can afford? Or are they going to have to be 350 to 4? And if they are 250, don't you think that there are investors out there that would just love to get their hands on a few of those? 1031 money coming through. I'm a builder. I build about 10 houses a year. I'm a real estate agent. I sell real estate. Anything gets too affordable, the investors line up, and they line up with cash. And then it turns into rentals. So, I think there's a lot stacked against it. I think this is a neat idea. I think it'd be really, you know, if executed, it'd be really neat. But I think it's a, I think it's poor timing. I think the infrastructure's not in. And I see, you know, the knuckle at Miss Hannah's, right where I live. That knuckles to transition, it looks like it's set up to transition into larger, single-family lots. You know, there's been a few people say that the Meadows, the Black Stallions, the Highlands, those are your most desirable neighborhoods here. And it's because of the larger lots. And, yeah, I think it's just, it's set up to transition. So, appreciate you guys' time, and have a good evening.
That's all that, here to sign up, testify. Applicants wish to rebut.
Just want to make a couple of notes here real quick. Hit some highlights. So one of the things that has been brought up quite a bit this evening is the R1 zoning. And we just want to acknowledge that, per the comp plan, the R1 zoning would be up to eight units per acre. And this project fits right within that density. And so we recognize that some people aren't very favorable of that. But in order to provide a professional-level housing that locals would be interested in, you know, that density, we feel like that density is what is best suited. And it does fit within the, fit within the area. It fits within that, what the comp plan defines as R1. So I just wanted to point that out. I also wanted to point out, as we discussed and looked at the RM designation, that, again, per the comp plan, and we reviewed this with the planning staff as we were discussing options for this plan, and leaned on their input quite a bit as well, that the RM is designed for low-density areas to service those communities that they go into. And they're not designed, admittedly, they're not designed to have some sort of big-box sore-type commercial. When we're looking at the commercial space in there, we're talking about, even though there's a footprint of 31,000 square feet, the building footprint, when it's all said and done, the maximum would be about 4,000 square feet. So we are, and again, the type of service that would go in there is very limited as well. And it's not to drive more vehicle traffic, but again, to drive foot traffic. The, a couple of things again that we just need to reiterate is that we are talking about single-family homeownership. These are not apartments, they're not condos. And I presume that everyone on the City Council is aware of the differences between those designations and that, you know, townhomes with the land that, underneath that townhome, front yards, backyards, all of that is owned. You own, you know, the interior, exterior, all of it. You own, you know, the interior, exterior, all of it. And I think that's a really key designation as well. There's been a lot of concern brought up about traffic again, and one of the things that I recognize is that, you know, traffic can be very subjective, right? Depends on what you're used to and whatnot. But I think one of the things that is really important to note is the comments and facts that Rob Paulus brought up, and that is that even through 2035, was it 2035? Is that Pole Line specifically would be at 30% of its design capacity, with all of the anticipated build-out throughout the surrounding area. Couple of comments that I just wanted to address that I think are really valid comments, there's concerns about the Yellowstone Pipeline. And I suspect a lot of people aren't aware, there's a substantial easement that Yellowstone Pipeline has that allows zero development over the top of that easement. And so, if I remember correctly, it's 40 feet. We don't have, we would not have anything within that easement, and that easement is closely regulated by, not just Yellowstone Pipeline, but by, well, as the city's job is to oversee that as well, and make sure that nobody is building in or right up on And just to close here, I've got just a little bit of time left. I do want to, again, state that, you know, as we looked at all of the options available, you know, we're presenting what we believe, what we believe is the very best opportunity for not just our family, but also for the city of Post Falls, to continue to offer more than the million, literally, million-dollar options that are going in right next door to us. And I recognize that with, when you offer more land, the price has to go up substantially. But there's not a whole lot of folks here that can afford, that live here currently, that want to stay here, that their kids are graduating high school or graduating college and coming back, they're going to be able to write that million-dollar check for that house. And we're looking for an opportunity for them to come and be part of this community and help it grow as well. And we spend a lot of time and effort working with the city staff to try and present a plan that meets those needs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Rob, actually.
Question, before I close it? Go ahead. Rob?
We were talking about the proposed, or the projected traffic in 2035 for Pole Line, 30% of capacity. Do you have a, is there a number that we can go on for that?
Yes. This is from our transportation master plan model, and I can't pull it up off of this. So, Pole Line Avenue, according to 2025's projections, had the average daily traffic at 1,700 vehicles per day on that roadway. During the PM peak hour, it was projected that the traffic would accommodate or be at approximately 20% of the volume to capacity, or basically, you've got 80% of the road capacity still available. By 2035, for Pole Line Avenue, and this was based upon Pole Line Avenue being a three-lane arterial roadway, the traffic volume was at about 2,900. In the staff report, we said 3,000, just rounding, and that, you know, was closer to 25% of the capacity, but, you know, 30% is in that ballpark that we said. You know, give a little bit of fluff in it, guesstimate higher. Does that answer your question sufficiently?
Yes. Thank you.
I think just for clarity, too, if I remember right, that the projection for 2035 is based off the KMPO's population projections, which is right around 90-something thousand people in 2035 in Post Falls proper.
2035, we're getting, yeah-
In 2040, we were 105.
Getting close to 90,000 for the city of Post Falls population, and by 2035, we were projecting that Montrose would be essentially built out or extremely close to that.
So, I just, everybody's wondering where that projection comes from, what the numbers are. It's 90,000-ish population of Post Falls in 2035.
And just for a little bit more depth on that, too, when KMPO puts together the population projections, they do work with the city's engineering and planning staff as to where those numbers are coming from, from the census, and then placement of those population growth.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
Close the public area. So, the first question that we deal with is the annexation. So, let's go down and like input from all of you on whether or not it makes sense to consider this annexation, not the zone, just the annexation.
Consider the annexation, but not necessarily the zoning.
That's first step, correct?
Yeah, the first question really is, is do you want to annex this property? Because that's the legislative decision. If that's a yes, then we move into the quasi-judicial decision of whether or not the requested zoning is consistent with our approval criteria.
Yes, I would absolutely agree, especially with the infill and having it just be that pocket of county there. So, I would, the annexation for me, I would-
Makes sense.
Be supportive of.
I think, yeah, infill for the annexation, just looking at that, I think it makes sense to bring it in.
Yeah, annexation's a slam dunk. It's on a, it's surrounded on all sides by city property already, along a fairly major roadway in the city. That's a no-brainer.
Nathan? Agree. Lynn?
I agree.
Kenny?
Same, I agree.
Okay, so let's go through the steps. Mr. Wilson, you want to take the lead on this?
Sure. So, criteria one on the zone review criteria is amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. So, the question would be, what information did you find in the record tonight that supported the conclusion or that the requested zoning is consistent with the future land use map or not?
Let's weigh in. Go ahead, Joe.
There's a couple of things in the future land use map and the comprehensive plan that, to me, don't line up with the RM zone. One being that commercial property is to be situated along roads of higher classifications with traffic numbers exceeding 4,000. Even with KMPO's estimates of 90,000-ish population in Post Falls and the future traffic patterns on Pole Line, even after a bridge goes up, which is planned for 2035, is still going to be below that threshold for commercial, which I would interpret the comprehensive plan saying that commercial is not appropriate in that parcel, and therefore, RM doesn't fit. Comprehensive plan also, regardless of the focus area or anything else, states over and over and over again that the higher-density uses should be, as you get closer to commercial activity, dense urban activities, the density should go up, and as you move farther away from commercial and dense activities, the density ought to go down. This subject property is about as far away from commercial activity, high-density, high-traffic commercial activities as anything out there. So, we look at, we've got the whole Seltice Mall and every, you know, commercial to the south, the developing prairie commercial to the north, and this is right in the middle of that. We'd be going from high-intense uses down to R1 to really quite-high-density, back to R1S, then going back up to more intense uses, and that seems to violate the principle of the comprehensive plan to situate lower density away from high-intense activities and higher-density towards it. It just seems backwards in this case. You go from low-density to high-density to low-density to commercial. That doesn't seem to fit.
Okay? Anybody else?
Yeah, I would agree with Joe, and that's why I was asking for clarification on the number, you know, traffic per day. And the other point that I would like to just reiterate is, we're focusing our commercial development on prairie, you know, kind of that east-west corridor on prairie, and then south on Seltice Way, east-west, not Pole Line. So, it just doesn't seem congruent with the master plan.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
So, I'm going to take this a little bit differently tonight, then. It sounds like if you were to make a motion right now, the motion would be to deny the RM zoning based on what I've heard from everyone, because you have to be able to meet all of the approval criteria, and if you can't meet one, that's enough to justify a denial. So, I suppose I would pose to you the question is, is there another zoning district that's sort of less intense than the RM zone that you think would make sense, given that you think that the property should be annexed, either the R1 or the R2 zone would, specifically, that would be another motion you could make tonight, is to move forward with an R1 or an R2, because those are both less intense than the advertised residential mix? So, throw that out to you.
So, the option could, is then, if council decides that's the direction they want to go, they could make a motion to approve the annexation with a different zone?
Yes.
And then it would have to go back to the property owners, so if they want to proceed.
Yeah, and then we would meet with the property owners. If they wanted to move forward, great. If they didn't, it would end. So, I suppose we can work our way through the rest of the RM if you want to, or you can make a motion now to say that you deny the RM, and then make a subsequent motion? You can, however you want to approach, that is fine by me.
My feeling is, without taking position one way or another, is that if you have all agreed that it fails that first criteria, then I don't think it's a good use of time to go through the balance of the criteria, because if it fails one, as Mr. Wilson said, it doesn't move forward. So, then I would agree. Does anyone care to make a motion for annexation with a different zone? One second, Joe. Carrie, go ahead.
So, we would choose a zone-
You'd make a motion for an annexation with a specified zone?
Do we first need to make a motion to deny the annexation with an RM zoning?
I think-
And then the second motion would come?
Yeah. That makes sense to me. You'd make a motion on the RM zone, since that's what was requested, and that's appealable. So, you'd have a definite decision on that, and then you'd move in and work through the criteria with the other zoning district and mine.
Well, I would make that motion.
Carrie, excuse me, one second. Joe, were you just going to make a motion, or do you have a question?
I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead, Carrie, please.
I would make a motion to deny the Hargrave Hathaway annexation, file number ANNX-228 with the RM zone.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shoef?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there another motion to come forward?
I would move to approve the-
So, we would want to work through the criteria again with that other zone in mind, if you've got a zone in mind.
I will yank my-
Sorry. I'll just ask for that. Sorry.
Question on that one, though. If we approve another zoning, does any development come back to us, or is that approval for them to move forward on development?
So, what you would see, I'm thinking on my feet a little bit here, so it depends. So, what you would see initially would be an amendment to the annexation and development agreement. So, we would have to make changes to that agreement, because that one, the one that's in your packet is premised on RM, and this is going to change the rules. So, if it were to go back, say if it's R1, R2, and they want to do a subdivision, the subdivision would be approved at the planning commission level, not necessarily here, unless there was an appeal. So, it just kind of depends on where it shakes out at, when you're approving the zone, you're essentially approving parties to move forward with subdivisions that are consistent with that zone that you're looking at, either be it R1 or R2.
Question for you, procedural question. So, we started this whole thing with a proposal for annexation in RM. That's been denied, so now we have nothing in front of us. So, what are we going through this for?
So, it'd be the same criteria. The motion would be to approve the annexation with a different zone.
Correct. So, doesn't that motion need to be made before we have something to discuss?
Yeah, we can do that.
But, again, you can make the motion, but how are you going to vote on it if we don't go through the criteria to determine whether or not-
Right. I think we need to make the motion, go through the criteria, and then have the vote.
Either way, works for me.
I'm good.
Then I have another question that somebody might be, even though I have the, all of the zones here, what I don't have in front of me, if somebody, one of these people could clarify, R1, what is the lot size, the minimum lot size? And medium-density, R2, what is the lot size?
So, the R1 minimum lot size is 6,500 square feet. So, the density is derived from taking 43,560 divided by 6,500. That's how you yield that. When you get to the R2 zone, it does currently allow single-family homes on lots as small as 3,000 square feet. It allows twin homes on 2,400 square feet, I believe, and townhomes on similar, I don't have it up before me, but a placement.
I know, I'm sorry to put you on that spot.
It's like, I believe about 2,400 or 2,000 on the townhomes. I think it's 2,400 as well.
Okay, I'm going to, one more thing that, you're never going to speak to me again. Okay, so on that size lot, the parcel that we're talking about, if it's not zoned, the RM, there's no commercial. So, you've got that entire lot at-
9.63 acres?
If it was R2, zoned R2, medium-density residential, approximately how many homes would be able to go there?
It'd be straight. I believe that the exact same plan could be developed in the R2, but without the open space and without the commercial. Very similar, because the density's derived in the R2, and we can sit around and do all the math, but generally speaking, R2 and their proposed layout would, could be attained.
So, you could still end up with 70-some?
Potentially.
But you'd lose the open space.
You wouldn't get the commercial, and you wouldn't get the open space. So, you would lose that decided disconnect with the comp line.
Joe?
Okay, to make a motion? I would move to approve the Hargrave Hathaway annexation, file number ANNX-228, with the assigned zoning designation of R1.
Second. Motion second, further discussion.
I'll just add, I'm hesitant to do this if we may approve it at planning zoning, and we don't get to see the development. If that is an issue, and it goes through, then we don't really get to see it. I'd be really hesitant to even consider it right now without that.
Well, because you're limited on, the main concern would be the density, correct? And you're limited on the R1.
True. That would be the main concern, but I would still like to see that.
Okay. Motion second. Shannon, please.
So, we're going to work through the criteria now?
So, okay, we have to prove it. I'm sorry, we're doing this a little bit different.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Following Joe's leader on this one, so-
I have no idea what I'm doing.
Criteria A, amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map.
Slam dunk on this one.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody curse?
Yep.
So, maybe a bit more?
It certainly fits the density criteria, it's compatible surrounding uses, it's keeping lower density away from the high-intense, commercial and residential areas of the city. High intensity? I can't talk tonight.
Did it work for you, Mr. Wilson? Okay?
Amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan.
It would improve transportation networks by continuing roads that are currently now at a dead end. Improvements along Pole Line and those roads. Pedestrian connectivity would come along with that.
Do you want to add anything else?
Would fulfill goal three, small-town charm and aesthetic beauty.
May I scroll for a minute, because there's a lot of those in here? To the next one. Goal C, zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features.
The R1 zoning, I think, definitely addresses our concern with existing development and future land use.
And is compatible with existing street classifications.
Okay. Four was in A, or D, I guess, is in your list?
Yeah, we gotta make that. The four or D?
Yeah, either one.
So D would not be applicable, you'd be looking at E instead, which is limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential, typically assigned for properties that proceed further from the high-intensity urban activity.
And what's existing, that's currently there, it's about as far away from the existing urban commercial activity as you can get, so low density is appropriate there.
Anybody, anything else to add? So we have a motion and a second, we've had discussions. Are there any other questions to come forward? Shannon, please take the roll.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up tonight is unfinished business ordinances and returning ordinances and resolutions, and we do have a couple items. First is a pond to roast, pond to roast solicitation replacement.
Stand down.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Andrew Arbini, projects division manager. I know it's been a long evening, so appreciate your time. I will do my best to keep this brief and to the point. The item tonight is a change order for the Pond Rose Solicitation Project. This will add days and costs to the project. Did want to note that typically, changes utilizing construction contingency have been within the public works, public work directors' ability to authorize, authorize those, given the magnitude of this change. In some recent approval levels we've implemented in another project, we wanted to present this tonight to all of you for consideration, so a quick background on that. Outline, so I'll quickly buzz through the background, want to talk a little bit about the change order, how we got to where we are, and then our path forward in utilizing the construction contingency. Fortunately, I had this already made. This probably looks familiar from my presentation in April. This is the new lift station that's being constructed. The shapes in green and blue is the new facility. This replaces the existing lift station built in the 1980s. So this has continued to be a priority for us in replacing existing facility in that it's had limited improvement since that time. This is early on in the project, so construction started late spring, early summer, and has progressed very well on site. We've had very minimal issues on site in construction. We've seen instances where materials, construction materials, piping, valves and such caused delay, including concrete supply, and we have not had that on this project. We've also had quite a bit of collaboration between the contractor and the consultant engineer and the city. There's a couple more photos. This is a picture of the overflow basin constructed, and then very similar shot with some additional water-containing structures, some water testing occurring in the foreground. So all the positives, get to the change order. So in June timeframe, Strider submitted a, or filed a formal claim seeking additional time on the project. The drivers in that, the generator and the electrical gear, so MCCs, something that you have heard me mention a lot recently. That's a pretty common occurrence. So those are the drivers in, in what's causing the delay in the project. We asked Strider to revise a schedule that shows implementation of that, of that gear and then final completion of the project. We also indicated our desire to negotiate a change outside of the formal claim process, that we felt that was best interest of the project, that we could do that through a change order. Strider came back with a revised schedule. Their schedule included a project shutdown, which is a benefit in minimizing expenses on the project. That will allow time to get the long lead electrical gear on site. With that shutdown, there are additional days that are being added to the project. So with the shutdown and the delay in delivery, we've lost some efficiencies in being able to group a lot of that sequence of work together. So it's a shutdown, maybe three things. It's a shutdown, it's additional days, and then there is a cost associated with the additional time on site, which is the final bullet point. So Strider submitted costs associated with their time. In a perfect world, each entity would cover their own costs, so the city would cover our costs and the additional time, similar to Strider. That was our starting point. However, Strider presented a cost impact, and in negotiations in that process, they offered to settle and came back with a revised amount that was more representative of the impacts that we are all seeing on the project. Details of that will add 108 days to the contract. That has a built-in winter shutdown, and then associated with the additional days is the $120,000 increase to the contract. Another item that's in this change order, and these might actually be flipped in the change order itself, is upsizing of sewer manhole. Worth noting, this is the first construction item that we have had, the first change on the project, and we're about a third of the way through construction. So something. Yeah, so a cost of $2,500, there was potential time impact in the process of negotiating the schedule extension, item one eclipsed item two, so it's been encompassed. So where does that leave us? The original contract award was for 2.8 million. We did ask for a 10% contingency, council approved that with the award. That's a 281,000. This change order uses about 45% of that, so that leaves us with a little more than half of that original contingency that we, we asked for. The revised contract value becomes 2.9 million. One other note that I did not specifically mention in any of the slides, this addresses the additional time with Strider. This does not address any additional time that is or may be needed with TO. That is, to date, the projections for the additional time that TO would need are currently covered in that, that budget, more or less. We will know more information once we start work again on the site in the spring. May or may not be an adjustment to TO's contract in the future. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Unfortunately, I think this is kind of the way of the world right now. Every time we get a project, we're seeing delays, we're seeing extensions, we're increasing costs, and I don't know what you can do about it. So how about it, council, any questions?
If it's needed, I mean, we have to do it.
Toilet's gotta flush, man.
Contingencies are really for.
Yeah, hopefully there'll be some left at the end.
Yeah, hopefully. I would move to approve the Pond Rose Solicitation Replacement Change Order to extend the project schedule and increase to contract value.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Next item up is the Mongio Meadows Annexation Ordinance.
Well, I would move to place the ordinance Mongo, is that how we're pronouncing it?
Mongio.
Mongo Meadows Annex.
Mongio sounds better.
On its first and only reading by title while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
The second?
Joe? Please take the roll.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson?
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, a municipal corporation, state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 3.91 acres with a portion of land located in the southwest quarter of section 35, township 51 North, range 5 West, Boise, Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, providing for amendment to the official zoning map, providing for an effective date hereof.
I move to approve the ordinance Mongo Meadows Annexation and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is new business, bill, filter, press rehabilitation project. Craig?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Craig Bormpole, utilities manager for the city. I've been asked to keep this brief tonight for good reason, but I will say, we kind of waffled a bit on this one. Do we put it on the consent agenda or give a presentation with a bit of information? And when we're spending the citizens' money, a not inconsequential amount, I tend to default to giving you the opportunity to ask questions. So I want to keep it brief, but also want to give you the opportunity to see what we're doing and why. So bio solids are created as part of the wastewater treatment process, and we have systems that get the water out of that, so we're moving less water, less weight, paying to truck less weight, and load that out onto system. So belt filter presses, which you can see in the photo there, is the equipment that we use to do that. We currently have, and I'll get to that, we have two right now. One of them was purchased in 2011 as part of an upgrade at that point, and that's one that was in the original photo. This is our workhorse, we're really relying on this one heavily right now, we use it quite a bit. And we have an older piece of equipment, it's an Andritz belt press, and I couldn't actually find when we procured this one. So we have it as a standby, it still operates if we need it, but it is aging. I don't know if the photos show, but there's a lot of consumable parts in here. When you watch it in operation, it looks like a big old, what am I trying to say? A newspaper printing press, a lot of big rollers, a lot of fast-moving equipment. So there's a lot of consumable parts. So we looked at this piece of equipment and we asked actually for an Andritz representative to come out and take a look and say, is this something that we can rehab or do we need to replace it? We anticipate creating a lot more bio solids after our upgrade is complete, and we want to have the systems available to do that. So he took a look, we had an Andritz representative, he'd love to sell us a new piece of equipment, but he said, you know, the parts in here that are going old, we can replace, and so we got a quote for that, for both the parts and for labor. Why I'm here for you, in front of you, is based on that price, council approval is required before we can issue a purchase order. So it's not necessarily like a construction contract, but based on the value, we need your authorization to, to assign a purchase order for that. The financials for it, the parts quote is $70,552, and the labor quote, apologies, there was an error in the council memo, is $23,934. The council memo said 23,932. So, yeah, my apologies for that. Funding for that will come through a line item that we have for this fiscal year, so solids, de-watering and storage. This kind of gets at the de-watering. You may see me coming back, talking to you about the haul-out system. We want to take a look at that, make sure that's up to snuff. We've had some issues with it, and when we have issues with that haul-out system, we have to put bio solids on the ground and they get loaded out with a front-end loader. We don't like to do that, it smells. So later on, we might be looking at some of that other equipment. I'll take time when, when we have it to, to do that. But I will give a quick shout-out. Recently, we had to replace the auger as part of that equipment, and Parks Department came and helped us out with some of their equipment so that we could do that in-house. Really appreciate their assistance with that. So, yeah, taking a look at our bio solids equipment, right now we want to get that press back up to full operational status. As part of this, there may be additional stuff down the road, but that's where we sit right now.
Craig, real quick, we're talking 93 grand. If it was a new one, ballpark, what would it cost?
The, the, the last project, when we put in the 2011 piece of equipment, it was 563,000.
So it'd probably be just a little bit more now?
Just a little bit more than that.
Good, thanks. Council, any questions?
No, just the need to make a motion?
Yeah, we're spending $53 million so far on it, I think that's probably a pretty reasonable amount.
I would move to approve the belt filter press rehabilitation project.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Craig. Mark, thanks for taking care of that. Next item on the agenda, citizens' comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Come forward, please. Name for the record, and Jase, you want to adjust that clock?
Michael Burgess, 2083 Northwest Wind Drive, and because I'm speaking on behalf of Cootney Classical Academy, I'll give you the P.O. box for them. P.O. box 901, and that's a different zip, 2838, 77. Greetings, Mayor Jacobson and city councilors. On behalf of the board of Cootney Classical Academy and by extension of the anxious families of the community, thank you for this opportunity to update you on the status of the school. I'm Michael Burgess, one of the eight founding directors of Cootney Classical Academy, and I'm here on behalf of the board, I just said that, I guess, to update you. Speaking of spending the citizens' money, as we've been focused on issues pertaining to the school building process, we've paused actively recruiting students, but despite the recruitment pause, our interested students list has swelled by another 300 students, thus surpassing our total to more than 1,400. Our school bond, which covers our building and startup costs, has been signed by Governor Litter, Little, Little, excuse me, by Governor Little. The investors will not close on the issuing of this bond until the site plan permits and building plan permits are approved, so until we have these and the bond, we can't break ground to begin the construction on this new school for the area. The board of KCA is mindful of and accountable for the safety and the soundness of the school, and we share thus this deep appreciation of the importance of due diligence by and on behalf of all parties, including city commissions, departments, and their excellent staff members. At the same time, the school has no option but to open in August. We have no provisions for doing anything other than that. The due diligence must be optimum to avoid a compressed construction pace. Our general contractor has never delivered a school late, and they use local contractors, they're not bringing people in other than management. But there are natural limits to what's possible. If the site plan takes what is normal, about three typical review periods, we will probably be breaking ground in December. Thus, we would like our construction team to know everything sooner that they need to exceed the expectations of the city than later. So we too are a public entity, a rather young one, but we are the little engine that can. Please receive what sounds to me like huffing and puffing, there's nothing more but our determination of our little engine for the best interests of the community. We're certain the city and the public want to be apprised of these concerns, that in knowing them, the wheels of responsible diligence will keep turning, and consequently, that every hand in its turn will have its optimal time to do their part until that first bell come August. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilman.
I know it can be a process or hoops we have to jump through. I've done it on two occasions myself recently, and staff does a good job of turning them as quickly as they can, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Sir, did you have some?
Did you need a hard copy?
No. Name for the record, please.
My name is David Russell. I live at 2411 North Titleless Way here in Post Falls. I'll also mention that I am an elected official for the Post Falls Highway District, but I speak entirely as a private citizen in this. I'd also like to say that I will never criticize or speak ill of any police officers or the people who serve our community and keep us safe. I have the greatest respect for them. I'm here to simply raise an issue which appears to be a policy of the police department that I wanted to mention. So on Sunday night in Prairie Falls, very near where I live, there was an attempted arrest of an alleged fentanyl dealer. Simply put, it appeared to have been an overkill. Forty-five police cars and a SWAT... Simply put, it appeared to have been an overkill, four to five police cars and a SWAT vehicle. They also drove up behind the house on Poline Avenue, tearing up a nice chunk of the grass along the side of the road. I requested a police report, and I found that there were eighteen responding police officers to this attempted arrest. So now, when I was in, um, Iraq doing combat patrols, our squads would go out into the city of Nazaria with fifteen Marines, and that was, um, in Iraq, at the most, so eighteen police officers for a single alleged drug dealer, seems like an overkill. All of our neighbors were standing out and watching this happen, and like me, all of them support the police, but everybody thought this was an overkill. So I called the Police Department on Monday, and what I could tell, this individual had no history of violent crime, and it seems there was no real basis for expecting a violent response. Apparently, this escalated response by the police was a department policy based on the presence of firearms in the home and the drug in question being dangerous. Now, mind you, we're talking about the drug being dangerous and not the individual. Um, so I fear this is how we slip into militarizing our communities. When you consider that fentanyl is spreading, um, and many people here own guns, it's not hard to see that this policy will result in more SWAT-level actions, um, around here in, you know, the coming months going forward, and I don't think any of us want to see that. So I asked you to consider this policy and possibly discuss it with the Police Department and see if this policy that they appear to have, um, is in the best interest, long-term of our community. And finally, I'd say there is a reason why the Left has opened up the border of our nation to crime and drugs. They want to destroy great communities like Post Falls. They want to make it, um, well, basically, they cannot win on issues, but they can win with drugs, and if we take the bait and militarize our communities, someone like Joe Biden wins and our citizens lose. If we take the bait and rip up pieces of roadside and damage the area, someone like Kamala Harris wins. When law-buying citizens...
Let's not, let's not make political...
Well, it is an important thing to realize, our country is being inundated with drugs to undermine our individual freedoms and to allow a militarization. Um, if we allow law-buying citizens to look out and be frustrated with their police officers, the Left wins. So what I'll say is, I come from, um, originally, I grew up in Connecticut, next to Bridgeport, Connecticut, which turned into one of the murder capitals of the war, you know, of the country because of drugs. I lived in Chicago, I've seen this happen, I'm completely against drugs, I have small children, I want the police to do what they can, but I believe in this case, that it looks like, when you consider so many people in this community own weapons, and at the same time, if you have this policy, there seems to be a real increase in fentanyl in the last few months, I've seen more and more evidence of it, we have record illegal immigrants coming to this country this year. I just think maybe we should be careful that we don't sleepwalk into a situation where we are routinely going out with SWAT vehicles trying to arrest a drug dealer in a nice, peaceful neighborhood on the golf course. That's what I think, I just wanted to mention that, again, I totally support the police, I would never criticize individual police officers, but I believe that we might have a policy-level thing that is happening here that perhaps you guys should consider, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin, you'll check into that?
I can answer that if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Council, Mark Brownall, Captain of Post Falls Police. This incident on Sunday night, uh, started off as a wanted subject inside of a house, uh, when first officers responded, that subject was believed to have barricaded into a very small crawl space and unknown if any type of weapons was in there. He did have an active warrant for a felony drug warrant, uh, with alerts for dangerous drugs, uh, and information was that possibly he was armed, uh, that's, this is North Idaho, everybody's armed. Uh, we take this very serious, we take, uh, the activation of SWAT, uh, very serious, uh, for any of these incidents, and it's only based on the criteria that we have. In the last year, we've activated SWAT maybe three times. Um, it's a very rare incident when this happens, it was out of, of abundance of caution, and the SWAT team is eleven members, so whenever they get activated, that's eleven members that are coming out there. So the eighteen is not unheard of, two of them was myself and Captain Mealer, um, and then you have your perimeter teams, and so, s, based on the situation that happened that night, it was, in my opinion, not an overkill, and I know, Mr. Russell also talked to Lieutenant Harrison, who was also out that night, um, and was also, uh, addressed his concerns during that phone call.
Good, thanks, Kevin. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're down to administrative staff reports, have none tonight? We have none tonight, sir. Uh, mayor and council comments? I can't think of anything. Council?
I'm good.
This is too bad, we all gave up our opportunity for bribes today.
I know, I, I mean, I, I took exception, but I, I'm serious, we have heard that so often, that anytime there's growth, that we're lining our pockets, and, and I will continue to call people out on it, 'cause that's the, that's the most, that's, it's garbage, sorry. We do not need an executive session? Next motion is?
Adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.